Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Columbia County School Board meeting for October the 28th, 2025, 6:00 PM. We will start with our mission statement. Through resiliency, professionalism, and perseverance, Columbia County Schools honor achievement and innovation, values a commitment to safety while also promoting integrity within ourselves and community. We will begin this meeting with the invocation from our superintendent.
Everybody, please pray. Dear my Father, thanks for allowing us all to gather here today. Thanks for allowing us to have this beautiful day of cool weather for the first time that we really got to experience the fall. Bless us all that we get home safe tonight, and let all of us that have made decisions tonight, that we make them in honor of our children, our faculties, and our staff. And most importantly, God, make sure we take care of our children. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are delighted to see so many lovely faces tonight in our meeting, and we'll open the opportunity to address any of our action items, which is only one, our personnel items. Do we have anyone who would like to address our personnel items? If not, Mr. Superintendent, is everything correct and in order?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, on the agenda as well as the addendum?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we will close and adopt the agenda as well as the addendum?
Make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to close and adopt the agenda with the items on the addendum?
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, that we close and adopt the items on the agenda as well as the addendum. Do we have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We will start with a presentation by Gil Bane. Check presentation from Mr. Whittaker.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Four members, Superintendent Kuee. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. It's exciting for us as we get to complete this one chapter. I'm also glad we were ahead of the canine presentation on the agenda. It's gonna be tough to follow that one up when Jade comes out. But I'll start off by just saying pending board approval tonight of the final pay requests. We will be announcing that the Mini J Knee Black Reconstruction Project is complete in all respects. So very, very exciting. I want to recognize first the outstanding work of Keith and his department in purchasing and finance. They did a great job with the normal, besides the normal activities they have to do, making sure those pay requests get through and all the POs and whatnot. So just great job on their end. I want to just give you a brief overview of the financial components. Think back two and a half years ago, our initial estimates were around that thirty thou- thirty thousand. Gil Bane had a heart attack over there, but thirty million dollars and then thirty-five million for Eastside, which kind of led to those numbers for the half-cent sales tax. Final project cost is going to be at twenty-nine million, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars, which I think the estimate were pretty good, but I think three years, all the stuff that's been going on with tariffs and construction costs, and that's just a testament to these gentlemen sitting here, but also the district, Ziskovich, and everybody involved. So today, I guess we started the school year. This is probably what I'm most excited about, is the school board was able to deliver a beautiful, state-of-the-art, enhanced-security-measure school to the citizens of Columbia County. It's just absolutely a beautiful school. But the success of the project was a direct result of the working relationship that we've developed with Gil Bane and the architects, Ziskovich. Fred's at it daily, I might be at it bi-daily, but the architects, everybody, it's just, it's a smooth communication that goes on, that there's not a whole lot, a whole lot of changes we've thrown at them, but you know, things pop up, but there's been items that we've wanted to correct with Knee Black or correct with Eastside. It's just been a great relationship and a great experience. So I want to thank them. And then, in my opinion, probably the most important component of the relationship and the whole project was based on your guidance and your direction, and allowing the district to hire a construction project supervisor. Fred Gaylord has been the key. He's shaking his head behind me right now, but I know. He's been probably the most, the key component to this whole thing. Him being out there onsite, and they'll be the first ones to tell you, both them and the architect, being able to do the inspections in a timely manner, having to call people in, overseeing all the aspects on our behalf to make sure everything's being done right. But also, the hidden component, which is a lot of work for Keith's office, is the owner direct purchasing and the things that he did there that saved us four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand?
Just over four.
Just over four-hundred-thousand dollars. That's, that's where we buy something, get the savings, the tax savings. There's a lot of process with the ordering, getting here on time, and those kind of things. So his, his, his being out there, for lack of a better word, has been instrumental. It's continued on with Eastside. So definitely want to thank Fred for what he's done. And like I said, I think it's, it was the key to, if you think back to, and I'm gonna switch over to Gil Bane, and the, even though they agreed to it, I, we put to them what I thought was just not possible, to start a school, pray when school got out and had it a year. Not many people can do that, you know, even put that on a construction company, but they took it on and said, "We can do this. We can do this." But you know, it's, thinking and talking to Mr. Kuee when he came on board and everybody involved, we had no latitude to be off. We couldn't, with the school, my hands down, with one school being moved to Melrose, one school being moved out, and all the different moving parts, there was no way we could even, even a week be delayed. So they pulled that off, came in on time, but also under budget. Just absolutely, you know, both those things together is a win-win. So here tonight, we've got Adam Verducci, who's the North Florida Business Leader, Senior Project Executive, David Bruin, and then the man who makes it all work, the Senior Project Manager, Michael Jenkins, out there. Those three right there, they're all Columbia High born and bred, and so that's our Columbia County born and bred. So that's even more special for us. So you want to come on up?
While they get everything organized, good evening, I'm Adam Verducci, as Mr. Whittaker said, and I, I'm glad he said all those nice things about Fred and Keith, because I know they would yell at me if I publicly said that. So thank you so much, because as Todd said, thank you Superintendent Kuee, thank you to this board. This is a complete team effort. It's a team effort with the community. It's a team effort with the construction team. It's a team effort with the district. Team effort with the administration and staff. There's a lot of moving parts, a lot of communication. So thank you for that opportunity. And tonight, obviously, we're proud to present a check in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. That is the savings being returned back to the district. Bad news is, this number is off. Good news is, it's another five-hundred-and-fifteen dollars we just found this week that goes back to the district. So this is, number is increasing. And as Todd mentioned, I can't say enough, you know, as someone, as I mentioned to the selection committee when these projects first came out, this project meant so much more to me and this team, being, you know, from this county, from Lake City, having gone from Lake City Kindergarten Center, graduate of Melrose, to Knee Black, to Lake City Middle School, CHS North, where Mr. Hatcher was at the time, to then CHS South in nineteen ninety-eight graduating. Thank you so much, and it's proud to be able to stand up here and deliver Knee Black Elementary School and, you know, on a path, a great path for Eastside Elementary. So thank you so much and very proud, and this means a lot to be able to deliver this. So two other things I want us to say up here. If you notice this wonderful sign here, it was the thought of the project team to take from the old school the sign that was there, and anybody who was either from the district or passed through the school at their time, when they came to work on our job site, we asked them to sign it. You can see the incredible amount of names of the actual people that worked on this project from this community and how that impacts these construction projects, impact the economy and the workforce. You can see all their signatures there, which is pretty impressive. So we're also something that we want to give back to the district and the school. The other is, we saved one of the bricks, the original bricks from Knee Black. We had it engraved with the date and the timeline. You know, that school meant so much to so many people in this community, and to have a piece of remembrance of that old school, that original school, even though it's been rebirthed into the new iteration for the generations to come, we do want to present that brick to, to the district as a reminder of the previous, in the existing school that was there. So, thank you.
Thank you. We can't thank you all enough for what you have done and how you have impacted our community. There were so many people who contributed to this whole process. And you can't call all the names, but if you put them in different categories, we thank this board. We thank the administration of Columbia County School District. When you mentioned Mr. Gaylord, he was shaking his head, but every time I went there, he was there. And every time I was walking, I would run, many times I was walking, I would run into him as well as Mr. Whittaker. Both of you played a critical part to Mr. Hatcher and his sidekick, I guess Batman and Robin. It takes all of us working together to make this work. But to you all, part of Gil Bane staff, every time, and, and I don't exaggerate at all, every time I passed Knee Black, everybody was working. And it was like you all had the train in motion, and it just didn't stop. It kept going and going. No matter how early I walked, you all were there. So thank you so much for what you have done for our community. At the end of the road, there are so many people who are proud to look and see that addition to the community. But most of all, for the children, thank you. They, they are so proud, and it's so much diversity. And it's because of everybody who worked together to make this happen. I can't thank you enough. And now I see the same process moving over to Eastside. And what can you say but thank you? That might seem like a small word, but it means a whole lot. So thank you so much. And to come under budget and to meet the deadline, what can we say? Anybody else?
No, I'll, I'll say something too. I mean, we appreciate all of you. Like Ms. Smith says, every time, it seemed like it was non-stop when you drove by Knee Black that you guys were working. I know you guys put in a lot of hard work. I know Mr. Gaylord, Mr. Whittaker, and everybody put a lot of hard work into this, and we really do appreciate it. We appreciate when you do it at Eastside. I've seen Mr. Gaylord there, you know, he, he acted like he was working, but I'm gonna believe that he was. So, but we do really appreciate all of you, and the fact that you are all local, that just makes it a lot better to me, because I love when it's all local. And, but just thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Well, Ms. Smith said, said it all, but I just want to just reiterate some of the things, and from experience, having experienced like with Fort White High School, when the difficulties we went through there, and the, and the lack of getting it done on time, and you know, I could go by there at three o'clock, and it would look like a desert, nobody working. And in the end, that's the way it turned out. I mean, it's a good school in the end, but, but it wasn't, it wasn't done on time. It was not, it just wasn't the organization that y'all have. And I'm, I'm around projects myself, and, and to do the project that size is incredible to keep every, so the right hand knows what the left hand's doing, and all the trades are lined up so they can come in and get the job done. You're to be commended for that. And Mr. Gaylord, I really appreciate the job that you do. And every time I've been by, you've been there, and I know the significance of that. I know having you there, and, and you can sign off on the part that needs to be done. Or if all the rebar is in place for the walls, to make sure it's there before they're poured, you're there looking at it so that we get what we're paying for. And I feel like we've, we have and appreciate the job that y'all have done. Everybody involved in that, I really appreciate. It's, it's a big effort. It's, it's a big effort. And just keep it up. When I, when I go to Eastside, I see Mr. Gaylord, I see everybody else, and I, I look forward to that. I think we really got our money's worth. Thank you.
Let's change chairs.
Yeah, we, we're switching back.
Musical chairs.
Ms. Smith, can I add to that?
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to echo what the others have said. Thank you to our district staff and to Gil Bane. It's really special to see our homegrown people as part of Gil Bane, giving back to our community. Much appreciated. I also wanted to just mention our community and their support for these projects, and that they saw fit to pass the half-cent sales tax. I appreciate their support for recognizing the need for new schools in our community and what beautiful schools they are. So thank you to all those who were involved.
Anyone else?
I think you all said it all, but thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. You see how this, this is amazing. Our next presentation, our school resource deputy's dog presentation.
Good evening, board members and guests. What a great night, right?
Yeah.
Tonight, I have the honor to introduce to you Kevin Bailey, S R D Kevin Bailey. Where is he? He must be outside. And Jade, Jade is our new canine member. She is our gun detection dog, and she's going to put on a little demonstration for you. Behind you, we have some chairs with some backpacks hanging, and she is going to hopefully find the bag that has the inappropriate object in it. She has identified it. So Jade is currently at CHS right now. She will start traveling with some, into the other schools so the kids can meet her. She's friendly with the kids. The kids are loving her. She's sweet. So please introduce yourself to Jade when you get done. She's, she's just a sweet dog. Also, outside is the fully fitted car for Jade, actually for Mr., or Deputy Bailey, but it's a really nice car. So please go take a look at that when we're done tonight. We'd love to show that. We'd love to show that to you as well. So welcome our new addition.
All right, thank you.
Sergeant Ball just told me the car is right outside this door, so if you want to leave this way, you'll, you'll pass it.
Thank you so much for that presentation. We will now move to our action items, and we have just the approval of the personnel items. Do I hear a motion to accept the personnel items that are on the agenda as well as the addendum?
Madam Chair, I so moved.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second that we accept the personnel items that are on the agenda as well as the addendum in the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. That carries down to our consent agenda.
Madam Chair, oh, sorry. I'll just make a motion. Madam Chair, I'll just make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the items on the addendum.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, except, moved improperly second that we accept the items on the consent agenda as well as the addendum in the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Okay. Do we have any citizen who would like to comment? Any citizen comments? All right, we'll start with our school board member. We're gonna start with Mr. Peeler tonight.
Oh, okay, we're going different. Yeah, I'll say to the guys at Gilbane, thank you again. You know, you, you are rock solid. I've bragged about you and bragged about you, and, and I think you guys are doing an amazing job. Mr. Wittergren, Mr. Gaylord, Mr. Hatcher, Mr. Harley, everyone here at the district office. I think it is all working out so well to see these schools going like they're doing. And, and I just love seeing Eastside, and especially at night when it just jumps at you a little bit when you're not used to it. But I do love it, and it's, it's going great. I do want to thank the sheriff's office. I want to thank Deputy Bailey for bringing the dog here. I know there's a lady in the back that you made her night a lot better because she got to see the dog. I think the dog has taken over a better spot than I have with her. But I want to thank all of you, Sergeant Ball, Corporal Ray, Sheriff Kitchens, and I see a few, I see a bunch of people, captain, sergeant, but also, you know, Mr. Coe, thank you. I want to thank, I do want to give a little bit of thanks to our former sheriff, Mark Hunter, and former superintendent Lex Carzwell, because they got the ball rolling. But thank you Sheriff Kitchens and Superintendent Coe for keeping that ball rolling because I was really looking forward to this when it started conversations. I, I think it's great. I know Deputy Bailey thinks that it's great, the, the car looks great, the kids love it. Last week at homecoming, the kids loved it, loved the dog even more. And Jade's gonna be a special part of the school system and the sheriff's office, and I look forward to her visiting the other schools.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hunter. Ms. Hill?
I'll just echo what Mr. Peeler said. Thank you to all those who made the presentations tonight. Thank you Deputy Bailey, I think he went back there, and Jade. It was nice to see the presentation, and we appreciate the support that we have of our law enforcement. It's especially nice to see Deputy Bailey because he's a former student of mine. And I appreciate all of his efforts to come back and help us in our school system. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Thanks again to, always to the sheriff's department and all they do for us. And back to Gilbane, I just thought, you know, you come up with another five hundred dollars, was it, today? You know, if you come up with some more, we're still in a position to accept money.
We won't turn it down.
We won't turn it down, thank y'all.
But our name's on it next.
Thank you so much. All right, let's get in.
Well, I feel like I'm going last, repeating what everybody has said, but I do truly thank you for all your hard work at Knee Black and continuing at Eastside. It's, these new facilities are gorgeous, and so I'm, I'm so excited to see our, our newest facility when it gets completed. And I thank all of you, everybody who's involved in that process, and as well as the board and the superintendent. Our SROs and Deputy Bailey. Our Canons are definitely, they're working members of the sheriff's office, and it's so good to see them, you know, show off their talents and that anything that can make our students and our staff and our teachers feel safer is, is great in my book. And so I appreciate, appreciate all of you and all of your hard work. Thank you for being here, Sheriff, it's always good to see you, and I think that's all.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Superintendent?
I just a few things. One, I, I want to thank the sheriff. I know he's bad at trying to hide in the dark, I got. Today I had to go to, today I had, I got the opportunity to go to legislation days at the college. And the sheriff, what he does for our county and what he does for our kids is second to none. And I want to thank him for that. He's there every time we go somewhere. The football game Friday night, the parade, he's just, he's there, and I want to thank him for that. And thank you for bringing his troops with him. And he makes our kids feel safe, and that's what this is all about. And I can't thank him enough for that. I'm also glad that Jade, Lex Deputy Bailey, get in his new truck. It's very nice that Jade shares that truck with Mr. Bailey, I like that. And last but not least, I'm glad that Mr. Hudson got out and, got back in his original chair because Ms. Smith took him.
You had, you had to say something about it, didn't you?
But my last comment is, to the three men right over there, I was at Knee Black when they came through. I was there. I remember them when they were just little sixth graders running around. And now you see them being the men they are and what they do, it's, it's impressive. And it's honors to all of the teachers in our system that they, that is what we put out.
Yes.
The best there is. And when you see them working, they're not, they're, they're there with pride. It's not like it's a job, it's pride. And, and they took pride in it, and they, they took care of us, and I thank them for that. And Todd and Fred, I, I say things to them all the time, but I don't get to see Fred anymore because he just stays at the sites. But what they do every day, having Fred on site every day has helped us. And Todd being around this stuff, knowing what they, knowing what they're looking at. Because I don't have a clue, and it saves our district time and money. And then Keith and, what'd she call them, Batman and Robin? I'm glad they were been around to help us with all the purchasing process. But most importantly, just thanks to everybody. It's a, it's not easy in the school system right now, and I want to thank everybody for all the hard work they do. And thank you, my students, for coming the men you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Well, you know, when you go last, well, can you say ditto? But thank you so much to everyone who's a part of the process, who make things happen. And what a better way to end this meeting, to see the product of these three gentlemen in our community. It is, it's just amazing to me. And I, and I have to say, when I saw the fir-, when y'all first did that thing with the walls, you know, y'all laid that thing out and then stood the walls up, I had never seen anything like that in my life. I, I mean, and of course, the superintendent say he didn't know what was going on, we knew that, but we're so glad, we're so.
Payback.
We're so glad, we are so glad that we have experts working together to make things happen. And in his humility, Mr. Gaylord does not want us calling his name, but he does, he make a tremendous difference. And then Todd looking over at him, you make a tremendous difference also. So thank you, and thanks to each and every one of you. So with that being said, thank you so much. Oh, the sheriff, I know, I'm sorry, that's Sheriff Kitchen, that's our school sheriff there, okay, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of the sheriff's office for the joint endeavor that we've come out with this K-9, to be able to make our schools a safer spot. The K-9 be utilized throughout the schools within Columbia County. As Ms. Tatum also said, before you leave tonight, we have a brand-new car parked out back, right outside this door here. You can see it from the, from the steps. On the car itself, we have all the logos from all the different schools that are in Columbia County School District. So it's, it's, it's a show of the good relationship that I feel we have with the school district and Columbia County Sheriff's Office. If y'all will give me one moment?
I thought there was a tree in that bag.
Sheriff Kitchens, we just want to say to you and your whole team, including our resource deputies, we can't teach our children unless they're safe. So thank you so much for making them feel safe, we appreciate you. Well, we appreciate every one of you, it takes a team effort, so thank you so much. Good night.